All right, I will call the Sartell City Council's special workshop for December eleventh to order. First up is agenda review and adoption. I would take a motion. It's gonna be limited.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. First up, development and code updates.
Yeah, council first, you have in your workshops, three RFQ responses and then a fourth one should be at your dais. I did get one at like four thirty-ish, five o'clock. Didn't have a chance to print it off or bring it to you and we did put a deadline at noon, so I'm not sure if you wanna review it. So, right now you've got four that met the noon deadline. I was, I'm familiar with parcel and then, and obviously granite, is it granite equities, or granite real estate?
Granite City Real Estate.
Thank you, there you go. It was the one that should be on your dais right now. And really, I'm gonna, did we get to the next one? Okay. Really just looking for any feedback on how you guys wanna proceed. Obviously, we don't have another meeting until January eleventh, so staff would have some time if you wanted us to, you know, interview or go through any specific process with these four, or if there's one that jumps out to you that you'd like us to bring back, if you want us to connect with Jed and Tim, open to suggestions. I think from a commission standpoint, they all, all were mostly around six percent except, I think parcel was seven and a half. And then granite was six percent as long as we could do some of our own marketing.
Counsel, how would we like to move forward on some of this?
Is it possible to put like a matrix together or something where we could look at a couple of different variables, like are they local or have they, do they have a local presence or sold property in the surrounding area? Just so we can kinda compare apples to apples?
Yeah, absolutely. And do you guys want me to come to add to that? And I'm sure Tim and Jed would appreciate it too. Do you want me to add to it? The one that came in, looks like it was from Remax Results Group. Do you want me to add that one into it, or do you want us to stand steady on the noon deadline? Or maybe I could add it and just put that it came in after, I mean, if you guys wanna, at least to just see.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be fine with that. What I'm hearing is, is let's have staff put together a matrix comparing them objectively, is that? You need to have a decision rendered by when?
I don't think, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but I don't think there's necessarily any rush. I think we can bring, it'd be nice for us to kinda have somebody started by the first meeting in January, so we could probably bring the matrix back to you in a reg-, I mean, you can approve tonight the RFQ anyways, so we could bring
Right.
the final four or five to the regular meeting and you guys could decide at that point, but we could certainly get the matrix out ahead of time.
Yeah, I guess, uh, one of my thoughts would be we as a council have a workshop on the twenty-first. Can we bring the matrix to that?
Yeah.
And then we could ask council at that time to to give consensus on
I didn't even think of that.
Three. Three that could be brought forward to the first meeting in January for final, again, we can't make, we can't make those decisions in a workshop anyways, but uh, being able to give some direction. I'm much more of a fan of, uh, being able to hear council feedback, uh, as part of the decision-making process. So, if we can do it twenty-first, I think that'd be ideal, we're all together.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then I, you know, I think I can get that matrix pulled together and if there's anything that jumps out to you guys of like, hey, what is it, what do they mean by that? Or do you want us to follow up with some questions before the eleventh? That gives us a couple of weeks to reach back out to the final three, ask any questions so that you guys can be prepared to make that decision on the, I think it's the eleventh. Eleventh or ninth. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. I can, okay.
One other item on that is, um, we've got four that are digital and one not, is there a way to the
I got it digital.
Okay, if you could share that with us, just so we have all five digital.
And then I've got another one in my, sitting in my email here, so Kaya scanned that one to me after they dropped it off today, so I can compile it all, make a matrix and get it all out to you guys in one package, so that way you can compare it. And then when looking at that, if you see anything that you, that jumps out as, you know, hey, more questions, we can talk about them on the twenty-first. Keep eating, 'cause I'll keep talking and then we'll switch. So, as you know, our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four strategic initiative, one of the goals was to really do, I don't, I keep referring it to as like a city code overhaul. It really wasn't an overhaul unless you compare the formatting, really cleaning up the formatting. There's some old terminology and language that was used throughout even old statutes that just needed to be revised, multiple reserved sections that typically reserved sections were previously held code items that were then removed and then they just left it as reserved, 'cause they didn't wanna screw up the whole order of the code. But we can clean up a lot of those. And so, what we really tried to do is go through each title and call out the areas that actually had some more, outside of formatting, more major revisions and areas that we were wanting feedback, feedback on, but I'd say ninety percent of it was really just changing up formatting and making sure that the numbering matched and, and terminology. So, I'm gonna go through each title. We tried to call out areas where we're looking for feedback. There really aren't that many. We've been updating our code so much lately that a lot of it is updated, but there are still, I'd say probably a half dozen as you guys saw these, um, when I sent it on my Friday update. There's a couple bigger items that we'd be looking for some guidance on. This won't come back to council until a public hearing that we wouldn't post for until February, March, depending on if you guys feel like you've had enough time to go through it. And so, we don't have it on a future workshop schedule, um, but we can. It just depends on how long you guys want workshops to go, 'cause we do have um, other workshop items as we start looking at the, uh, strategic initiatives coming forward and then our community survey items, so.
If, if we can add this to a, it'd be either the second one in January or sometime in February. My concern is we're gonna, three of us, three out of five are gonna go through this tonight. We as a council are gonna break until the second Monday in January and none of this is gonna, like, just being honest, people aren't gonna dive into this until it shows up on the next agenda. And so if we could have it as just a placeholder on a workshop, not to go in-depth on it, but to keep it in front of us.
I can even add it on, April, you guys are planning on January workshop, water tower plans and the park, I mean pedestrian. Okay, and so I can even put it at the end at one of our workshops, just so it's on there, and if we have time and you guys wanna go through it, great. Otherwise, it's just a, hey, don't forget to review it.
Or if, if we could add it in on the February one, knowing that January's gonna be a little busy, it sounds like, and then have the public hearing in March. All I'm trying to do is keep it in front of all of us because, um, it's a massive document and I think if we can do bite size at a time, that might be better, or just keep it relevant.
Yeah, absolutely, I can do that, add that on one of them. I will also send out, Rob and I have put together kind of a timeline and agenda for workshops, basically for the next year. So, I can send out what those, um, agenda items are too, 'cause that might help you guys kinda just have an understanding of what's our cadence is with both strategic initiatives and KPI, performance measure, priority budgeting, but then also, we've got a ton of mill site stuff coming up. So, I'm gonna go through these and by no means do I necessarily expect answers from you guys tonight of like, yep, this feels right and this doesn't. Some of it might be easier than others, but we just wanna get it out there for discussion. So, title number one, mostly formatting changes is one of our smallest, uh, titles. The first couple are, are pretty easy. Adding the city code of conduct, which will also get, um, added and was reviewed with Stacy on Friday, would also get added with our, our policy governance. So, nothing too crazy there. Most ordinances do have a code of ethics. And so, it kinda brings us into the next century with what a lot of ordinances have done. And then, again, it would model over with our policy governance work. Not something that you necessarily need to have an answer for today, but just make sure you, you specifically look at that code of ethic, ethics and read through it and, and that it makes sense.
Sorry, I don't have my laptop by going around. Um, something in there on, um, council and board members providing property ownership.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, I don't think that will impact at a council level, but I, I, when I read that, I grew concern of people willing to serve on everything Sartell, people willing to serve. I'll, I'll find it, it
Yeah, send that to, or
Specifically ask for the valuation. You have thirty days and you're guilty of a misdemeanor if you miss the thirty-day mark. And I just don't think people serving on an everything Sartell, um, or a more passive board would have the interest of doing that.
Yeah, I will, um,
I'll find the section it's in.
Yeah, I'll make a note too, to read through that. Got it, noted. Otherwise, my, my understanding is it's a pretty standard code of ethic, ethics for other communities. That seems a little aggressive, so we could dial that in a little bit more. This one we did want, there were two parts on the title too, speaking of boards and commissions, that we wanted some clarity on. The first item is that planning commission is, tends to be one of the more difficult boards to recruit for, 'cause it is a little bit more, not a little bit more, it's a lot more technical. It is learning code and public hearings and developments and ordinances and so we have some really strong planning commission members right now, um, some of which are going to be reaching their maximum term per our current ordinance, so Carrie wanted to get some feedback and get a pulse, like, is there a willingness for us to allow some flexibility there that we could extend them for those who desire to stay on longer sometimes, and oftentimes they don't wanna stay their maximum term and end up resigning before that, but if we have some that are willing to, are we okay with allowing them to extend, obviously, up to the council's discretion? Especially on a planning commission side where they're learning policies and code and things.
I would be, and this is something we've tackled for a number of years, um, I think our, our most recent revision was to, um, still have interviews after your initial term is up. I personally am comfortable in removing the number of terms you can serve. Uh, but I do like the opportunity that you survey a three-year term on planning commission. When that term is up, it still gets posted out, we still seek applicants. Uh, I, I think the change I'd be comfortable with is if their term limit is up, if they wanna apply again, they certainly can. They may A, be the only applicant, or B, be the best applicant. And it creates an opportunity. It also creates an opportunity for future council to select a different candidate that might be more qualified or might be better for that role during those times. It's a volunteer position, right? Like, someone willing to volunteer, I don't wanna say no to, when someone, when there might not even be another option.
Yeah, I, I agree, and it puts a little bit of protection there if it's not a good fit.
Yeah. I think it gives us an opportunity to have an avenue, but also open it up for other people if there might be an interest out there in the community.
And, and I like the changing of that. Maybe the changing of the narrative a little bit. It, it seems like there's a narrative that planning commission, I'll take for instance, you can serve three terms. And so if you get in the planning commission, you're, unless you wanna get off, you're on for nine years. And I'd rather that be, you get to serve a three-year term, right? And we can just totally get away from how many term limits. We're just saying you can see, serve a three-year term and
Reapply.
reapply. Likely you're gonna be a great candidate compared to someone else who isn't entrenched in the planning and zoning conversations.
Yeah, I agree, 'cause then it's less about, well, you're on for nine years and then you gotta make a decision. It's like, hey, every three years?
Yeah, our most recent, uh, who she simply didn't want to, from my understanding, she didn't want to serve another term. It felt like, oh, she's leaving the planning commission. It's like, no, she actually served out her full term.
Yeah.
And we should
Honor that.
Honor that, yeah.
No, I like that. I think that is, makes a ton of sense. The other item on here, you may recall that we combined the, uh, convention visitors bureau and the everything Sartell into, or I'm sorry, at the time it was the EDC, Economic Development Commission, and we made a everything Sartell, and so it brought together two boards, which was five and five, and so we had ten members. At the time, all ten of them were still willing to be appointed. I don't wanna necessarily say active members, but, um, we kept them all, and so now through attrition, we've had quite a few drop off. We do have one opening, or we have an, uh, we posted for everything Sartell right now. But would like to bring this down to a little bit more manageable group size and an odd number of seven members instead of ten. It would still allow us, right now we have six renewing members on there and we'd have one opening for, I, I believe that's, we'd have the one opening for the vacancy that we have posted right now, potentially two. I, I have to look at that again, but um, knowing that we struggled to get applications for these volunteer positions already, ten feels a little intense, and it is also a really large group to try to manage. You typically end up having kinda the same seven that end up coming anyways, so. Revise this one, and this timing seems like a good timing since we have so many that have left from just attrition in general. Does that one feel good?
You're looking for direction to go seven?
Seven. Does that feel appropriate? All right. Business and licensing, um, removing reserved chapters three and seven, which were related to amusements and food vending machines, which are no longer applicable. Unless you guys would like to preserve them for future ordinances, which is what we could leave them just as vacant reserve chapters, otherwise we would just suggest getting rid of them, and if we have additional items under business and license regulations, we would just add them to the end. We adjusted anything clerk treasurer to read deputy clerk. Adjusted, a lot of it was still referenced to paper applications, and so adjusted that all to the online application process. Fire and PD, um, reviewed a few alarms and massage licensing areas for modification. But otherwise, most of this was process revisions. Nothing that we necessarily needed guidance on, as long as you guys are okay with us removing reserved chapters under this area.
Real quick on, on this, so we're reviewing it. As mentioned prior, you're gonna bring it to a public hearing, March.
And clean it up.
And, yep, um, the one item going back on on, uh, everything Sartell, do we need to take a separate action in January on that?
I think we'll be okay until then, as long as we've got enough positions for interviewing the vacancy, which we do, so we'll be okay there. Okay. Title four, public health and safety. Mostly formatting, minor changes. There's one reserved chapter that's just blank at the beginning. Nobody knows what it was there for, so we would just shift everything up and get rid of that. Adding, uh, fire department recommendation to not allow buried propane tanks, um, actually putting this into ordinance. We revised wording to community development director from clerk treasurer in different areas, updated it to the actual permitting process online instead of paper. And then a new law this year was to add native grass language to match the twenty twenty-three state legislation. I know. There's another one coming, I can't, there was, yeah, there were two legislative requirements this year for ordinances, so we'll get to the other one coming up soon here. These are pretty minor though.
Ah, hold on.
Not that native grass.
Don't, don't I, doesn't the city weed inspector have to go through additional training to to know native grasses? Unless delegated.
Native grasses.
Yeah, acting mayor.
Acting mayor when he's not here.
He might still be watching.
Yeah. Let him know he's been designated for the native grass enforcement. Yeah. Police regulations. Nothing too crazy in here. Um, removing chapters three and eight, which have been reserved for years and nobody's entirely sure what were originally there. Uh, chapter seven, we would remove as well, which is ice fishing below the dam, which is no longer applicable, or nobody can recall what it
No one can tell me why, but the reality is, I don't, even if somebody here wants to argue with me, I don't think we enforce it. We don't have jurisdiction over bodies of water. And it directly affects game laws, so I don't even think we can try and regulate it if we really wanted to. I could certainly look into that if somebody wants to keep it.
So, we're okay with removing that, right?
I didn't even know it was in there.
I know, exactly. Wayne didn't either. We sent it over and he's like, what is this? I've never known this to be in here. Moving chickens to the domestic animal definition. Uh, we have an area where it calls out forms of communication where threats can be investigated and, and adding to that definition the social media text messages, emails and any other online messaging. And Brandon, um, my understanding is that you guys talked about the curfew language after a lot of discussion decided to leave that be.
We did, we were gonna, in some ways it would be nice, because we're such a regional area, to adopt the same language as St. Clouds, Acapulco Rapids, and try to get on the same page. St. Clouds wasn't actually, the first part wasn't bad, but it was overly complicated because it differed on the night of the week. So, not only kids, but the police would have to be aware that they get a later curfew on these nights. We almost repealed a big portion of it, but agreed that at least in the city, when we're talking about quality of life issues, it's nice for the cops to have a reason to make contact with the juvenile when it's really late at night, uh, gives us more of a legal basis to make that contact. It's kept it the same, and, and the cops are used to it. They understand what the curfews now, uh, changing it can be a lighting curve thing, so.
Uh, real quick, adding chickens, what does that do?
Well,
See the chicken inspector now?
I won't make any comments.
Timing wise, I did just find your weed inspector report.
Right now it's listed as in the definition area, it's listed as an animal that we don't allow permitting for, because it's not a domestic animal, but we actually do, if you meet the qualifications of the one acre lot, they're technically a domestic animal. Motor vehicles, Brandon, I'm gonna need you on this one, I think, a little bit, but, um, formatting changes. Removing chapter three regarding bicycles, as that is now covered under state statute and no longer under city codes. We edited this restricting parking language so that, uh, we no longer allow parking in front of mailboxes, which is pretty standard. Modified residential truck parking restrictions, clarification on where it is allowed or not allowed to match the St. Cloud ordinance. And then, the big item here, I mean, both Brandon and Peter, you probably can talk to this too from, I know Butch has dealt with this a couple of times, is right now the seventy-two hour parking um, in the same location, and so then what will happen is they will move it six inches and then start their seventy-two hours over. So.
A lot, yeah, a lot of it happens in areas where they're trying to sneak a motor vehicle repair garage into a residential neighborhood and they're saying they're not doing it, so that, that's kinda what the the whole point of that is for, is to try to avoid get, letting those people sneak by with those, uh,
Yeah, I think the thought process and changing is, is right now, we get a complaint that just likes up there, hey, this vehicle's been here for three, and then they move it that short distance and technically it's been moved, and the problem is, when we discuss this too, like, what are we changing it for? If we change this, we could change it to say, no, it has to be on a different facing block. Or, you know, we can make it more restrictive for those vehicles, but then we're changing the ordinance for relatively, we do get calls, but it's a relatively low number of calls uh, in the whole scheme of things, so changing it might actually get us more police calls of people frustrated and angry now with the change, uh, because they can't camp, park their camper in their truck in front of the yard for the week while they're getting ready for a weekend camping trip or uh, whatever it is, so it's not, I get that it's annoying to some people when they'd make that five-foot move just to pass the ordinance and but it's such a low number, I don't know that we're willing, unless you guys are receiving other complaints or I know there's a few out there, but, uh, that's kinda why we sought guidance on it.
Yeah, I'd say manage to the trend if it's not a huge issue.
I don't, it becomes an issue every now and then, but it's usually for the same people.
Yeah, I agree with your plan in that. What I don't wanna do is create an ordinance to try and curb a small amount, which then gives residents that are trying to find ordinance violations more opportunity. And, um, so yeah, if, if like, as we go through, is there something we don't even enforce today, let's get rid of it. 'Cause all it does is generate calls to us or emails to us. Some instances, uh, stop by the house. And if we're not gonna force it, I don't wanna talk about it, so.
And we had half of mine to like, to just repeal the whole thing, like, you're suggesting maybe, it does allow us a little bit of enforcement effort to, if we have a problem. And the, right now the CSO and the officers are focusing more on vehicles that are safety concerns, like they're blocking signs, they're at intersections, so you can't see well when you're trying to get through an intersection and
Most of this, I, in my eyes, I view it similar to the curfew. It's a reason, it's a tool for your officer, should they need to enforce it. It's not something, and back when I was a kid, maybe they were, they were looking for curfew violations. Like, yeah, let's just keep it as a tool, move forward.
Title seven, public waves and properties. This is the main, like, park chapter right of way. Remove chapter four, which is, for some reason, a specific chapter to just St. Cloud orthopedics field. And speaks to like hours and it, it, my guess is that it was initially put in before we had other major baseball park facilities, and then we created the parks chapter and it actually contradicts with it. Yeah. And then also removing chapter six, which was private docks on public property, 'cause they were all removed with the county road one project and are no longer applicable. Updated the right-of-way application process to match what we actually do and all the permit requirements. We removed the joint applications option, 'cause we don't actually offer that. Updated the parks chapter to make sure it is in alignment with the master park plan and also matches our park shelter rental policy. Updated the cemetery chapter to deputy clerk from all the clerk treasurer and to match our current process. And then the biggest item here where we're looking for some feedback is regarding the presentation from Benton County Public Health regarding the tobacco ordinance. presentation from Benton County Public Health regarding the tobacco ordinance. Um, which we will let some feedback on, you know, now would be the time or as we're doing these ordinances would be the time to make that change. But just also knowing that ninety percent of Sartels in Stearns County, they don't have that ordinance, so it's a little challenging.
The, it's funny, uh, the school knew this was coming up tonight. I happened to make a presentation there today, so the principal grabbed me and pulled me aside and wanted to talk to me more about this. I didn't know that he was in police school before, so he shared he was a big part of that over there. From a police standpoint, honestly, it doesn't matter. As long as it's even across the board for the officers to enforce. This doesn't necessarily have a huge weight on our operations. So really it comes down to the philosophical business standpoint, or you do want to regulate businesses in this way. We have a huge partnership with the schools, and I know that's important to you guys, they do this to me, so I'm trying to hear them out as well. Uh, to his point, understanding that no one else in the area, in Stearns County, has it yet, it's, who's gonna be first? Should we be the ones that are trailblazing to, to help curb the tobacco use in the school? I don't disagree with what they presented. There's no doubt that would help. Uh, from a completely devil's advocate standpoint, as my entire life, methamphetamine's been illegal. Uh, and it finds its way over our border every day. And, and so like, are we really stopping it? Or do we need a bigger statewide effort? And again, to the principal's point, while someone's and he started hearing about how many years at that time and then it spreads out really from there. So it does really become kind of areas of decision on how you want to regulate business and talent and, uh, and that partnership with the school.
I served on council during the tobacco twenty-one. And I don't know that, at the time, our conversation was around just that. What's, what's Sartell's real impact in this, right? Like, if we agree with it, that's one item. But then what is our true impact? And, and, um, many of our surrounding cities had the same feel, is that unless we all do it together, or better yet, unless the state does something, an individual city's not gonna have an impact. Even if Sartell, Soccer Rapids teamed up on, on this or, or tobacco twenty-one at the time, like, what's our overall impact? And so I guess that's, I would relate it to this is, I like the direction they're going. It concerns me that in Benton County, the first, if not second largest city, might not be part of it. Um, and that we only have a small, finite number of residents within it. I guess my, I'd be open to seeing if Stearns County is, is kind of looking for a city to start it. If that's what they're, if Stearns County's waiting, and I think maybe you would ask that question, or someone had asked them that question. Yeah.
If there was any other, other than county, Stearns that's similar, but you kind of go across the border, cause I kind of read what Ryan said there that if it's THC or anything else, our whole thing was, if they can go three blocks to get it.
Right.
So they want to promote and say, hey, Sartell thinks we're on the right page and we can grow this. And be careful how they say it, cause our policy won't state it, but yeah, if they get four or five others trying to say it's on board, then yeah, but until then.
I think they see that, that fail, right? They've kind of tried to do that, but then so now they're looking for that one partner. Then you go to the next partner, and it's just gonna be work, leadership is city by city, like trying to get it to grow. Uh, because those big collaborations, as you guys know, that they're talking to a couple of people on city.
I think access is so different now, like, you know, the kids are on their phones and if they want something, they can get it from anywhere. Um, I re- I'm dating myself, but I remember when the cigarette machines went away. Um, but that was a huge point of access because they're unmanned and you could just push your money in and take it out. And so, um, I just, I don't know what impact this is gonna have necessarily on access.
It's hard when you're in a regional area, cause to Alex's point, you
Yeah, I'm trying to see in St. Cloud getting behind it.
No, that won't, yeah.
Until then, it like, like Ryan's point, you need a big, big item to make an impact. And then probably start with the right approach, and that's why I think it's important that we frame it that, and we support the concept, cause you said it's a part of the schools, but maybe others on board.
I'd love to explore, uh, through your relationship with the school district that, that's growing. How does Sa- how can Sartell support a Sartell-specific initiative for our school age kids? Right? Like, take away all the marketing and everything else, like, what can we truly do in Sartell to have a Sartell impact on our youth? Bluntly, I'd say I really don't care about the youth outside of Sartell for this, right? It's just, I'm not trying to, hey, we're gonna regulate Sartell to have a regional if, impact. It's not. So is there something specific to Sartell high school, middle school, that the s- uh, school leadership's like, hey, if you do this, we partner in this way, we could have it, we could achieve something. I don't know what that is, but I'd rather we go that route than just saying no, or saying, yeah, we'll sign on to what Benton County's doing.
And I think use your connections to see what Stearns County is thinking or applying. If, if it's just not anything they're touching, I mean, that's kind of a message in itself, so it'd be interesting in.
Chief's meeting tomorrow morning.
Perfect.
I mean, I, I relate it back to your SRO plans, right? Hey, here's the hand we're dealt, but like, what can we do in Sartell? Go that route. Is that fair?
Um, water and sewer, title eight, mostly formatting and language, couple terminology areas, and then our current design standards, which we had recently updated anyways. This was mostly to just match, um, our already existing ordinances. Building regulations, same thing, mostly formatting. We noticed some repetitive language Butch caught in, that was already in title four and then also in title nine. So we're removing it out of title nine and keeping it in title four, which is where the multifamily language is already. Um, title ten, zoning, um, this is a big one, one of our biggest chapters or titles and chapters. Um, in this one, we're gonna leave, or our recommendation is to leave the reserved chapters, just because typically in zoning, you might add new districts at different times. We know that we'll likely be adding one for the mill district, um, potentially other business districts, like Central Minnesota Health Care Hub, things of that nature. And so it's nice to keep those reserved chapters in the event we need them. Um, the sacred community definition, like the native languages, was something new passed in twenty twenty-three per state um, legislate, legislature, and it requires a CUP process that allows it in all districts. Uh, updated our terminology of zoning districts to make sure it's consistent throughout and matches our districts. Added verbiage around the public works director being able to install snow fencing. John?
Oh.
Do you want to expand on that?
No.
Okay.
He doesn't care anymore. He will not be installing another snow fence.
By the time this is approved?
Yeah, he's hoping that is.
We take it down.
On that, are we gonna, can we call out? I mean, there's clear areas where it's not impacting the use.
Which one?
Snow fencing.
I mean, we had, we had some issues this year. It's kind of the first year we've had issues.
Yeah.
We had complaints of people playing snow fences up, but it's kind of hard for us. But in the, in the complaints that we had, um, most of them were actually, people were probably have to keep the neighbors' leaves up their yards.
Um.
They clean their yards, the neighbor wouldn't.
That's awesome.
And there was two of them that were back, that was the incident. Well, no, it's snow fans. Well, it was, you know. They kept their yard clean, their neighbor wouldn't clean their yards, and the neighbor, neighbors.
Oh, for Pete's sake. So you are going to review those, otherwise it's not allowed.
That's what we've been doing.
Okay.
With zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Zoning's been, you know, kind of lead the charge to the fit into the zoning.
Yeah. Okay.
And then we had this year two, we had a private contractor just put it up in one of his client's yard to make it easier for them. But it actually was right the right way and it would have made it harder for us. So we made that one for you, that. So be able, some of these private companies start sticking it up, and then you gotta kind of watch what impact it's gonna have on your, your right place for your storage or our storage.
Okay, so we're good with that. And then, uh, two items in this chapter specific to the recent solar ordinance. So the hundred and twenty-five percent in financial assurance, um, you can see Carrie's note there. That's just based on our, our last conversation. Hundred and twenty-five percent for financial assurance, could be more, but not less. And then, oh, city properties to be exempt from the megawatt cap requirement. So this is specifically related to our lagoon property that we currently have an agreement on. Um, but isn't probably necessarily as lucrative of a property as, uh, directly off the transmission line. But still would like the potential to be able to allow city properties, especially something like a lagoon or like a closed landfill. Um, and so allowing city properties, public owned properties be exempt from that cap requirement.
So yeah, we board that up, but we were, however, we, uh, spoke it.
I know, I, like.
I'm scared of that, I was, I think we need to word it carefully that we're.
Said they don't think we're putting it on a park or something?
Right, I'm gonna jump around, we just pass right away.
Mm-hmm.
Do we?
I mean, it could be similar to how others that came forward, that if we can define, there's no one to use.
Yeah, that's true. You still have to prove the best. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like sticking this in under zoning under a seven hundred and sixteen-page document that we struggle to read every page of, um, just to, how current it is and.
So strike that part, just stick with the fi- a hundred and twenty-five percent financial assurance and we can come back and revisit the.
At least until we're two bed cap, we're not at the cap yet, so it's.
No, we aren't. We are.
Well, and even, even when we're, like, I'm not disagreeing with it, I, I just feel like we need to.
Meet on it.
This is one that needs to be out in the public far more than updated terminology of zoning districts to match a- actual districts.
Yeah.
Like, that to me is boilerplate item stuff. That one is really meaty that
Yep.
we need to have more open public discussion on. On this whole title, I'd love to see planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
Engage on it.
Yeah, for sure. Mm-hmm. Which is, I think, part of why Carrie was, um, thinking probably March before we bring this back to a public hearing, cause it'll need, all of this will need a review at the planning commission level. Okay, and then.
Sorry, on that, maybe that's our natural next step on it, is planning commission can review.
And then come.
Bring to us the changes. It's back in front of council one more time before March, reviewing the changes or recommendations for planning.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and we can kind of get it cleaned up a little bit and formatting cleaned up and. Uh, and then updated the wetland chapter to match, um, current requirements and definitions, which weren't too many revisions, cause we had recently updated that one anyways. Uh, and then subdivision, this one recently, we just did in twenty twenty-two, so not very many changes in here, just made sure it matched our process and standards. A couple formatting items. And then flood control, which we really don't have much, um, ability to change, cause it's a state requirement. So there's very little room for edits or revisions. We just ran it through engineering to make sure that it matches what the state requires. But otherwise, um, that one's primarily a state requirement that we don't have much flexibility on. So that is the majority of a, of the ordinances. It's not as bad as the red lines you see all over the six hundred and sixty.
Six hundred pages.
That was six hundred pages.
Are you able to pull those pages up at all?
Uh, can you pull up, go in the council packet and pull up the?
Yeah, it was actually, like, that's how I got to it, is the workshop.
Go to workshop packet. Uh, go to, here in the workshop, okay, yeah, go to the very bottom. There you go.
And then page seventy-seven is what I was referring to earlier.
For the.
Yeah, it's listed, um.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Code of Ethics?
So Code of Ethics, so the disclosure, it starts at the bottom in red.
Yep.
So real estate holdings.
Oh, okay.
Um. And then it goes on the next page, and it actually gets into, um, quite a bit of detail.
Wow.
Uh, that needs to be provided for the public. And again, it's each council member, board member, commission member, or professional staff member. Um, I think the bigger area or one of the concern areas is number two on the screen, item A. Affiliation and agencies doing business with the city, name of organization, positions held, and compensation involved. I, I don't know who that would apply to. But I've, I imagine when I see compensation, I don't know if that's their compensation, if that's the contract compensation. But there's some stuff in here that probably is gonna steer a lot of people away from trying to serve on a volunteer board in our city.
Yeah, let me, okay, page was that, seventy-seven, seventy-eight? Let me run that one, um, uh, past Stacy too, because I, she was planning on whatever, that basically the code of ethics in here would also match code of ethics and policy governance. And I suspect that this is more aggressive than what she has in hers.
Do you know where we got this from?
Uh, I don't, I, and it's weird, cause there's blue and red on there, so that makes me believe that it's been edited by two different. So I'm not sure if Carrie looked at it and then our attorney looked at it.
Yeah.
Um, but I will, when Carrie gets back from vacation, I can touch base with her too. But really, I, more than anything, I want it to be what we would have in our policy governance, cause that's what it really should match.
Yeah, and I think there's, I, I mean, serving on different boards in our community, we have to sign disclosures frequently. And I, I actually think that would be positive for us. Um, but to what extent, I think we as a council need to have further discussion, uh, as it gets into some of this and, and understand where that we draw that line.
And especially board, like, commission members, like, that is extreme. Um, cause on Friday, she talked about, like, annually, just making a disclosure. Like, council members just making annual disclosure of like, here's the things I'm on, here's the things that I'm part of, and then you just, like, that's it, you move on. Um, so I think I'll have her take a look at that.
Yeah, and again, I, I absolutely support disclosures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just don't want them to get in the way of us attracting
People to, yeah.
Volunteers to serve, right? A disclosure of property you own, totally fine. When you get into the valuation or compensation.
Totally.
Yeah.
Um, yep, okay, I got that. That's interesting, cause like I said, it's got two different colors on there that leads me to believe that we go back.
And then the bottom there, the, the violation is a misdemeanor, so.
So you're gonna enforce it? Yeah.
Any person who violates any provision here of should be guilty of a misdemeanor.
Got it.
How'd you get your misdemeanor? Oh, I failed to mention one parcel.
Probably not.
We haven't been doing it, so like, nobody's asking.
I think this is new language.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is all, that's all new. We don't have that.
I thought that was existing and modified.
No, we've never had a code of ethics.
We're not doing it.
So it's copied and pasted from somewhere, but then you can tell that there's two edits on it, so I, my guess is the attorney attempted to go through it, but.
I originally thought the same thing. I looked it up, I'm like, that's not in.
No, we don't have that currently. Um, I, and, and presumably it's copied from some community, so I wonder how their recruitment efforts are going. They probably don't realize they have it, similar to ninety percent of what we just went through. Um, NCS community survey, just wanted to kind of update you guys on timeline on this. Um, so, uh, mailings will go out January fourth, and that's to a random sample. I'll show you the map of the random sample in a minute here. And then there's an open survey that goes for an additional two weeks behind the actual mail. Do you want to go to the, go down one more? There you go. Ooh, up one. And so these are the, they do a random sampling, they try to include different, um, property evaluations and household sizes and just really get a, a mixture of demographics. In, in, when you see the pockets in there, it's primarily like commercial areas or, you know, undeveloped areas. And so these people actually get a mailed version of the community survey, and then there'll be an online version at the very end, but they do the mailed version first.
Can they do both?
They do both. Yep. Well.
I think online's, um, they try, they try to differentiate between people that mailed it.
They tried to differentiate between people that mailed it and completed it. Versus people that have the option to take it online.
You could do it twice, right?
So, yeah, they're the survey experts and they have the survey scientists as they call them.
They're far better than us. Yeah, it'll be, I'm excited that they're actually mailing some out. I think this will be the first survey we've done since I've been here that we've actually physically mailed something to their house that they can take. And it just, I think there's a lot of people that don't have access to social media or websites. Or don't go on there to get their information. It'll be nice to see if that garners any more response. And their goal for survey response altogether was thirty-five hundred or north of thirty-five hundred. And so I, I mean, I, I'll be very satisfied if we get that many responses.
Do they, is the mailing random or are they targeting a specific demographic?
They, it's random, but they're trying to cover all the demographics, so that's what the, the dark purple is.
I assume there's no brand of any sort? The branding on there that show that A, it's local and you can make it.
Yes, and there's like a letter, cover letter that goes with it with our logo. And like, you can kind of really make it sartell so they know, hey, this is legit. It's not like your census ones that come that are.
I was gonna say, if we can get a copy of what the mailing's gonna look like and.
Put it out.
Share that out in our release. Otherwise, by default, a ton of people are gonna throw it away.
And Nikki has this little clip here on the utility bills. And then it'll go, it will also be on the electronic utility bills. Um, I'll have her share something on social media of just like what the survey looks like to notify folks. They also gave a whole like PR platform of, you know, catering, send out the. When you have the two, o- two week open window of like sending out notification to different associations and agencies and groups and senior committees. And just, how do you get the largest group of folks you possibly can? So, um, I will make a note here. Media, NCS, okay. And then the survey results, we'll go back to them and then they analyze them and they will get them back to us, um, by March is what. We were hoping to be able to have them for that work, first workshop in March. And so hopefully that works out in their timeline. Um, it sounds like we're kind of expediting their typical analysis period. But, um, we wanted to have them so we could get going on strategic initiatives and priority budgeting, so. Okay, I saved you for the end this time, so you can't like take everybody's thunder. No, no, this isn't you yet. I mean, you can take this one if you want. Um, so just thought I'd give you guys a quick update. I had my first training. I had met Stacy online before, but I had my first training. She was here all day on Friday for eight hours of policy governance. It was a lot, um, probably one of the most overwhelming things I have sat through. I think I can safely say in my career, it is going to be a massive learning curve. And paradigm shift for what I am used to or what I have been taught or what I've been exposed to. Um, but honestly, all good things, it's just, it's a ch- it's a change. It's a lot of change. And I, it is very overwhelming. She's very intelligent and does a great job of, um, training. So I'm excited for her to come, start walking through it all with you guys. We got through two of the four quadrants, um, so that felt encouraging. We talked through, um, just really making sure that a few things that we wanted to achieve coming out of it. When Ryan and I met with her, we talked a lot about just communication being a key element. And, um, she had obviously, uh, been up to speed and, and watched the November twenty-first meeting. Understood like really truly the breakdown in communication and where that's coming from. And so her and I went back and forth. She's gonna talk more about it on the, on the December twenty-first meeting and going forward. Like, this is not gonna be a quick process. If there's anything, I realize it's like a twelve to eighteen month process. Nothing's gonna happen overnight. But just wanted to get your guys' input of just how do we do a better job of, as a staff? Of making sure that communication is getting to everybody in an equitable way, in the same amount. And that nobody's getting information above anybody else or before anybody else. Um, I think by the end of this, she'll have really helped us set out some processes that'll be more formalized. But I would love to edge into it slowly so that we aren't having to rip the Band-Aid off at the end. And it's a lot of change all at once. And so I wanted to just get your guys' thoughts on, you know, do people appreciate and like the Friday updates? I've really been trying to leverage that as an opportunity and I, I do a call out to all the department heads of send me your, um, messages to share with council. To really try to use that as a time to get consistent messaging to all of you. Um, and then just some suggestions on her end and, and things that came to mind for me is. Really trying to avoid having any one on, like, one council member attending really anything with staff. Like, try to keep it two or more. Uh, she wants to talk about the committee structures that we have and, and I think she's got to get some of your guys' feedback on that. Um, as well as the process for reaching out with questions. I know that was a big item. Um, and then just also recognizing that there's a big portion of roles, especially Ryan's role. That is more ceremonial and like PR in nature and making sure that there's enough flexibility in there for that aspect as well. So with that being said, what, um, we'd love to kind of move forward on is that. Unless you guys don't like them, that we continue on the Friday updates, really try to use that as our main source of communication for. Communication to all of you. Um, I think she would like to see more monitoring reports and, and those types of things on council agendas going forward. Once she teaches us how to do them. Um, that Ryan and I would continue to have our agenda setting meetings. So historically, we've done every week a one-on-one meeting, but transitioning in that to be really focused on the agenda, agenda setting. Um, and then she would help us formalize that process. And then really trying to avoid any one-on-one work with council members. And focus for right now on the committee level until we get a more formalized process in place. So just wanted to see how that feels to folks. We're gonna get to a more formalized policy eventually, but it is not gonna happen overnight. It is, it's gonna be a heavy lift, um, with a lot of back and forth. And, and frankly, a lot of her just getting your guys' input and opinion of what feels right for you. She had a lot of, you know, great recommendations and concepts that I was like, ooh, I'm not sure how that'll go over. But I, I think you guys just need to be able to spend time with her and talk that through. Um, but I just wanted to get feedback on those particular areas. I don't, not a ton of crazy impact. Um, you know, every once in a while, there's council individual attendance at things. And so we'll have to rethink that. Like, I know we've been working with just Jed on the community center. And occasionally Ryan will get invited as one to different things. Um, but otherwise, it's not very often.
I, I'll just speak to the Friday updates. I think they're great. Um, they're super helpful. It's amazing what happens in one week, so it's just helpful to get that update.
Yeah, I, I agree with Friday updates. I mean, historically, um, Anna and I would meet every Wednesday at, I think, nine AM. And just the, like, Friday updates is where I learn all that information. And, and I love that we're all getting it, uh, together. And frequently, I'll go back to historic Friday updates. So it's actually a repository for me of where information's at as, uh, we get asked in the community or others. So I would encourage us to continue that. Um, the, the mayor admin one-on-one meetings, you know, I think there's probably some emotion into that. Um, one thing I would, one thing I'll caution is that we as council had a meeting on the twenty-first. No action was taken from council on twenty-first. I think there's still a lot there that we, through this whole process, need to unpack, talk through. And so coming out of that, uh, Anna and I had some emails back and forth of, you know, she was canceling the meetings. And it's like, timeout, hold on. And I think there's an interpretation that council gave guidance on twenty-first to, hey, no one-on-ones, no engagement. Um, and I just think we want to be careful on that. The one-on-ones spurred from, uh, Pam Whitmore. Uh, early twenty twenty-two, um, when we engaged her in, in some dialogue. Uh, that's one of the things that came out of that is, hey, the mayor and admin should be meeting weekly to stay, get on the same page, stay on the same page. So again, I, I wanna, I, I like the council having a discussion over it. I wish all five of us were here to have a discussion on this. Um, I just don't want us, I don't want any staff members to, who watch the twenty-first to, to take direction from that. Because as a council, we didn't give direction there, right? Like, that was a workshop for us to really vet out some things and some, um, challenges within council.
Yeah, I would agree with the Friday updates as well. Um, I think they're important to kind of knowing what happened that week. I want to make sure that with this governance policy, it doesn't restrict us too much. What I mean is obviously one-on-ones are gonna happen. What we need to do is operate. One thing that, by the way, is it goes back to like the Avalon Village where. Council is there to be responsive to our residents where staffs pay, hold on, back up a little bit and make sure to follow policy here. So make sure we manage that appropriately where it's not, nope, we can't talk to this resident because of his policy two point eight or whatever.
I did, I actually brought that situation, that exact one up. Cause I'm like, there, there's this, this isn't like a nonprofit where you can kind of draw that really clear line. It's like there's, when you're an elected official, you have a duty to be responsive to the public. And so there's that notion there that you, you, there has to be a balance, right? It's like you can't just throw a policy out there.
And I think too, you're, you're like eight hours or ten hours ahead of us with her.
Totally.
Understanding all this. And so I think when we sit down and start learning, like.
And it's gonna take time.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I, I don't think any, from my understanding, I don't, or not that's been relayed to me. I don't think there's any staff that took direction from the twenty-first meeting. I think really truly there was a lot of staff who watched it and were like, okay, what can we do better? Because there were a lot of takeaways out of that and not that it was direction or directional in nature. It was just, hey, clearly there's a mark that's being missed and there's a miscommunication. And like, how do we, how do we improve? And, and I, I don't think anybody took it as direction. It's just truly a, hey, how do we just be more consistent with communication? To make sure that everybody feels like they're getting the same amount at the same time, in the same way, as much as possible. To your point, Alex, that's inherently, that would be perfection to always achieve that.
And that was definitely a thread that came through. So, I mean, I appreciate staff really listening to that and trying to respond. But I think through this governance model, I think some of that will happen naturally too.
Absolutely. And I think she'll help us formalize the process. We will absolutely need to help align, um, a balance there. So that it doesn't become too restrictive. And I, I don't know, I know outside of Minnesota, this policy governance has been done for a municipal before. But I'm not sure how many Stacy has worked on for municipal. I think she's mostly done school districts and nonprofits. So I think that's, I had to bring Rob into the training, because it's like, there's certain elements that have to go to approvals, you know, from a financial side. And so there'll be a lot of learning for all of us. I just wanted everybody to know, like, hey, we're kicking off this process. It's gonna be a long process. There's gonna be things that we're gonna have to, um, revise and tweak throughout the way. And I think truly, everyone in this room and anybody not in this room is just trying to be responsive to how can we best support the council? And I, and doing that in a really fair and equitable way and as clear as possible. Like, if you guys get those Friday updates and you think it's missing something, like, I should have probably sent out Ryan's message this morning. And wanted the budget, actual like breakdown like that. It's like, oh yeah, I should have sent that out in the Friday update, that you guys could have used that probably over the weekend. So it's just, keep me in the loop of what I can do to better, um, provide resources to you guys and, and all of us. Cause we all have reminders on our calendars to provide those, so.
Well, and I think tonight, another example is, you know, two council member, three council members didn't know a resignation was coming. Prior to getting to the dais. And so I, I think, again, I looked at that and I'm like, gosh, I, my initial thought was, hey. Gonna reach out to Anna and say, hey, let's, let's get that out to all council members in advance, give them some line of sight. That's not our current policy. And I'm resistant to change a whole bunch of things until we actually dive in and let the governance policy drive those changes. So for me, it's more of a mental note that I keep making and, and actually in a one-note of, hey, here's, here's something we could do better. But I don't wanna, I don't want to change that now to say, hey, moving, like, one of my ideas would be moving forward. Um, once the agenda's published, we can't add something to the consent agenda. Like, that then kind of assures that we bring line of sight to topics and we don't, we aren't just, um, in the public's eyes. Sneaking something into the consent agenda at the dais. I don't want to do that now, because when that topic comes up in our policy governance, like, hey, we already got it taken care of. It's like, no. So for me, it's kind of like, hey, let's not change anything as we're going through this. Otherwise, what did we change? What's working, what's not working? Gets really clouded in my opinion.
Yeah, and just to be, I don't think anybody's suggesting, unless you guys want us to change something on the Friday updates. Ryan and I still have our connection meetings, which is primarily focused on, on agenda. And, uh, have those set specifically on the weeks that we have council meetings. And then, like I said, the, the council attendance at staff level meetings is really very, very rare. And I've tried to be a little bit better even prior to starting this policy governance of just really acknowledging whether staff needs, um, an elected official there or not. And just being completely open and transparent and honest about that. And, and sometimes we do, because it's nice to have that extra support, but.
And what is that?
Like, if we have just random, if we have staff meetings, like, I think of the one, the school one, that we thought we were meeting with just Joe and Krista and. And I just was like, hey, I don't think we need you here. We're good on this. Well, then it turned out that we did, you know, that they actually had their chair coming as well. And so I'm trying to be a little bit better communication on that too of like, hey, we need you here, we don't need you here. And, um, I think that, not really too much of a changer, just want to be upfront and honest.
I, I think to Alex's point, um, there's fortunate, unfortunate, depends on the situation. There's times where I'll get pulled into something. I was, I think it was last week I was here, maybe. Um, there's a developer that thought land in Sartell and wanted to have a meeting, um, and talk about it. And I, um. Could have made it, could have not made it. Um, I don't know. Those are all kind of situational si- um, decisions. But that's, again, something I think was, we get into policy governance. How do we decipher that versus just laying down the law right now to say, hey, we're just gonna hold tighter. Not, or we're not gonna do any one-on-one, we're not gonna do staff level engagement. I don't know. I think we're, we're getting into the, the details of it here soon and it'll improve from there.
All right, you're up, Brandon. Take us home. I saw that.
Uh, so as I have it done, it's given us direction on when the old seal is gonna have to be app stock and everything. If you haven't noticed, it's on every badge. Every officer wears, on every sticker that has our badges, all squad cars, everything. So we're like, we have no idea. I just wanted to give you a heads up. At some point, it's fifty dollars a badge to change out.
God, I was wondering where you're going with the whole seal thing. Uh, is it an opportunity? I mean, are you taking that opportunity to say, hey, is this what our badge, as you're going through with your patch?
Yeah, we did a little bit. So the, this badge is kind of important to Mater and Trainer in particular, because they did design it like five years ago. So I think, like, you wanna even broaden it a little bit up? Uh, but we'll still, now that we have to, we'll still examine the.
Yeah.
Uh, the badges are like a hundred and fifty apiece and every officer's got three. And you've gotta either replace them at that hundred and fifty apiece or you have to. And every officer's got three. And you've gotta either replace them at that hundred and fifty apiece, or you have to replace the seal, which is still fifty bucks apiece. All the stickers on the squad car, all the letterhead, everything. It should be fun. So. Uh we're gonna delay it out as long as we can, but I'm anticipating the legislators are gonna ask that we're not allowed to use it at some point. Give us some sort of date, of course, with no funding.
I was gonna say a state surplus could cover some of that.
No, we actually need that for other areas.
Uh but just whatever. So I didn't know if you had, I knew you guys probably all saw that it changed, but it's actually a lot of stuff across.
Peter, what I'm hearing is uh fire beat police to this. I don't think that seals anywhere in the fire world.
And and I actually, we were trying to figure out at one point, State Statute said we had to have it on our badge. We don't. We're having some difficulties looking to have it have to exist on our badge. The badge will look funny if you take this little circle piece off and.
Like put a bridge in there.
I didn't even think of that, of how that'll impact.
So my guess is it will, there'll be a bunch of chiefs that complain about it and they'll say they use your one time state, but need or whatever. So I just wanted to quickly show you guys um and talk about the flock system.
I think there's an over under on the one on County Road one. How long till Plow hits that? All the others that I saw seem like they're well secured, but there's a small pole on County Road one.
Is that over by like twenty seventh?
Uh I, no, right by River Crossing.
Oh, yeah. And that's a temporary one? Construction at that roundabout.
Hmm, that makes sense. That's the way. It's just a small pole.
Yeah, I like, oh, that's not gonna last. Wendy Daisy actually can't see anything.
So. When you log in, this is kinda uh from a, the officers can't see a lot of this.
Nor can we.
I can see it over here.
Maybe it doesn't let you share it.
I wonder if you, if we gotta go to. I mean, I'll just start pushing buttons.
Peter, how long till you get smoke cameras in the community?
It's gonna be a while. Got them at the community center. We uh cut that roll bar, fire next to roll bar.
Sorry.
I did take an interesting class where they had digital imagery and that stuff, cause they would love.
Try putting on the full screen again, full screen.
There you go.
So this is the insights page. They just were installed December first, and we already have four hundred and two.
Holy cow.
Uh which is, so it's administrator, it's kind of nice to go in here. Hundred eighteen searches means that's just, a lot of those are training right now. I'm trying to do training search. Uh but it's pretty easy to track a thousand hits hot list. I will say. Ninety-five percent of those, you, I had no idea how many revoked and suspended drivers are driving through our city.
No, really?
It is constant. Every morning I get thirty five alerts of revoked and suspended drivers on our roadways. Now, that's revoked suspended registered owners. I would say when you stop one and when you, so Minnesota doesn't allow us to see that hit, just stop it. I have to run the driver. See it, run the plate, see what the description of that person is, and then look and, you know, try to get an idea if that could be. The registered owner and I can make a stop. Uh but I would say eighty percent of the time it's the registered owner's vehicle. Driving it, it is suspended and revoked. We didn't buy it as a tool for that, like that's the whole intent. I will say though, like. Suspended and revoked drivers are typically ones that will go insurance, the ones that will get hit and run and and leave the scene. On a higher propensity than like a license.
Do you have any ability through this or through your um access to. Recognize, hey, there's a thousand sixty five or, there's a, there's a percentage of that that are revoked. That live within the city of Sartell, or their address, registered address of city of Sartell, that you could be proactive to send them a letter saying. We recognize you're driving through our city, you're revoked. But it also like, I mean, you probably hear if you pull them over, like, oh, I didn't know I was revoked.
Some people do, and like, so there's some philosophical stances to it. Some people may disagree upon a suspended driver, you could be suspended for the child support. I'm not advocating we don't, our courts don't hold them accountable. We are trying to take the driver's license of someone who's trying to get money out of, and how are they supposed to drive to their job? You know, so some philosophical reasons there. Uh to your question, no, we can't. So what the system doesn't do is run the plate and give us that. Data. So you as a cop now, you have the plate, you'd have to physically run it. Uh get that data and to be that proactive. And so you actually might violate some DVS laws. Trying, if I get where you're going, it would be nice to just proactively tell these people to stop. My history in law enforcement, most of our DWI offenses, uh they're not paid fines, things like that. Uh and so if they're not willing to kind of like take care of those things, they usually don't, or can't get insurance on their vehicles, things like that too. Some of them, a decent number of them are at that come here with one, one that you're talking about. They're coming off fifteen to hit those businesses, grab lunch, whatever it is, and they're getting back on fifteen and leaving. So there is. Likely a decent number that aren't residents of our city, but during morning traffic times and evening traffic times is when it's the. My phone, I have to turn the notices off on my phone. It's just constantly.
Well, that's where my next thought was, is does that dilute so much of the system that you don't actually get the meaningful pings anymore?
So without, I'm trying to not show private data on this. Uh but there is, so in here I can go and change my notifications. So a lot of our traffic officers enjoy, we try, have left that on. Most of us have turned it off. Uh so that it's not, so when I hear that thing, oh, it might be something, it might be a warrant, uh whatever. Those are, we had to add some warranties come through town. Um we. By requirement, VCA, we're required to notify them within ten days of installation and have a policy enacted. We've done both of those things. So we're living in full compliance now, where it seems like the officers will really start gathering how they wanna use the system proactively. But we have had two success stories. One was an assault at GLN's uh that occurred. It got called in as a GLN, so we took the initial investigation. The victim was able to tell us that it was an older model truck. Uh with some descriptors that haven't had no plate. And within minutes, we found the vehicle going through that same camera. The assault actually occurred in St. Cloud, uh we found out. So it was their investigation that blew up on social media and they were able to. Uh kind of grab it because of the system we had. They were already investigating, already had a suspect. And because of that case, St. Cloud is now being flagged. So I was meeting with Chief Augustin last week, super excited. He had asked for like fifteen or so. I think the council's gonna settle somewhere between five and ten. A lot we have. Uh but it's a start and we'll be able to share data and like our investigators and their investigators. These are all the same vehicles, so if they're criminals, they're criminals in the area. The second success we had was at Walgreens. I think it's Walgreens, oh maybe it's Coors. Either way, uh we had a elderly female go missing. She had some dementia issues and left her husband there and just disappeared in her car. Uh we set up a hot list immediately in the cameras and they found her vehicle. Uh somewhere on one of the pine cones, and they were able to track her down within a few minutes. Get her back to her husband and see if it's solved. So a couple of quick success stories, because these are covering our outbound vehicles. A lot of this proactive piece, it isn't quite there yet. I don't think it's gonna be more of that investigative piece. Uh grabbing vehicles going past and going outbound. As we build the system, we share with St. Cloud, the Sheriff's Office becomes a partner. Uh they will look at some of those internal cameras maybe as time goes on and try to capture uh some more of the proactive pieces of it. From the screen here, the change, uh Rob, if you go back down to the devices there. Oh, go up a little. Just uh the next device tab. Down, lower right, sorry.
Oh, next.
So we can quickly look through, see what the battery life is among, two of them are connected. Hardwired to power, so we'll never have battery issues. Uh the rest of them are solar and so we're, we did that on purpose, hardwired was a little more money. Uh we just wanted to see how efficient the solar power was actually going to be, so. That's kinda. California just solved a serial killer case in LA with these as well. And.
Think that was on the national news, wasn't it?
And they kind of had the controversy over this. Their A C L rep in California was surprisingly gentle and actually didn't disagree with the cameras. Just said like, as long as you're thinking about privacy. Uh I think I shared with you guys, we're we're only doing it thirty eight year retention, which feels almost too short. Sixty is the max allowed in Minnesota, but we're trying to be tolerant in terms of privacy. California of all places, it's thirteen months of that. Uh so it was really surprising how the difference is in between the two. But we also, uh in order to protect privacy, like citizens concerned with that, uh we kept our subscription so that if. Our agency searches for a vehicle and they have a match in Sartell, they cannot get that data. They only get a notice. Sartell has the data you're looking for, contact them. That way like we have a verification process. Uh and can decide if we wanna release that data, which we will, we'll be good partners. We just wanna make sure things are the up and up and see what the reasons for that are. Some agencies literally do have it wide open. Any system user, law enforcement, they can see all the, all the data. We're really in favor of that. We kind of wanted to keep that tight, so. Uh we may look at a little more opening with St. Cloud, so that St. Cloud's not calling our investigators every Friday day trying to get data released. We'll sign some VCA required agreements with them. Any questions at all?
Super interesting.
Have you stood up a process or a plan for any HOAs or neighborhoods that want to fund one?
So but we're hoping in January, I actually figured it out tomorrow at the December Chiefs meeting. I'm hoping to host. Uh Chiefs meeting in January to roll this out to all the chiefs. Augustin's been a close partner with this all along. Sheriff's Office already knows about it, but. At our motive uh board meeting, I learned a lot of the local chiefs and sheriffs have not. So we're gonna try to get them all in one room, kind of go over some of the stuff I shared with you guys, see if we can build that partnership. Once, I'm hoping by January, February, we'll have like a really good handle on the system. To your question though, we're still trying to figure out, maybe even seeking your guys' guidance a little bit. We have two options. We can ask HOAs to fund. The cameras and we're in complete control of it. Um or HOAs can buy these. You can buy this directly from Flock. And are agreeing with them. We don't own the cameras, but we can get access to the data through our system if you allow us to. So. The nice thing with that is if the HOA owns it, they're paying for it. Whatever allowed uses per statute you have, you have full control over it. We don't touch it. But if you get a burglary, if you get theft or whatever.
You can access.
Quickly request access. So it'll be kind of deciding as a city, I I don't know if we wanna mix that. We may wanna push one direction or the other. And we're trying to find out maybe the downfalls of each, but there is a huge area for even corporate partnerships here too that we'll definitely start seeking.
Think you'd have to have a pretty organized HOA to. I don't know, I can't even think of one in town that's, you know, would be robust enough to like. Have somebody in charge of. The system, the access, and it's a rev- revolving volunteer window of positions and.
You know, the more organized ones, and I think like the cul-de-sacs, those aren't necessarily useful to us in a proactive standpoint. They're simply like a safeguard. If you have a burglary or something strange happens in that area, we can grab it from you. From what I understand of it, and this will probably be if whatever direction we go, uh probably a flock come in again and give a presentation of hope. You know, explain the pros and cons. But from what I understand, if the HOA is on, even if they kind of, they, I don't know, change uh presidents of their HOA, whatever they do. If they've granted us access, we'll be able to always see that no matter what. Uh they just have to early on adopt that access.
Yeah, I'd like to see ways that we can brainstorm to get it even beyond the HOA. For example, I live off Thirty Fifth and Oaks, where they can get, same with you, by the back wheel to get into our neighborhood and help help pass the camera. So I know obviously we're limited to start here, but there's ways that you can have neighborhoods really fun to get. Certain places where even if they'll buy BlackBerry, you got a camera each side of it. It's places like that where, obviously, we just started this, there's gonna be spots like that throughout the town. I think people would really get behind this.
Yeah, and that's, you know, whether it's organized HOA or not, there's two loosely organized HOAs that I'm aware of in our community. That individual houses have set up cameras to watch the neighborhood. I feel a lot better, and I think most residents feel a lot better having a, just a camera system that they can fund, that the PD can. Manage access um versus if something happens, then having to reach out to that neighbor to see if they caught it on their cam, their personal camera. To then give it access to your officers. It just, it feels clunky. Um I'd love if there's a way that. Groups of people, neighbors, HOAs could get together and fund it, should they see the need. One concern I have is just long term, right? So if they fund the initial camera for a year, two years, what happens in year three when they decide they don't want to? Like we as a city need to figure out what's, what's a plan there, what's a strategy?
Yeah, like the, I mean, we could even go as far as early summer, late spring hosting like some sort of community event where. Flock would be on hand, explain the system, uh and get some feedback on what they wanna see. Cause that, we did talk about that internally, like. That it's all, let's fund it. And then, you know, if your coffers only have a couple grand in there, I mean, we shouldn't fund these. And so that is a difficult piece of it.
Well, I think your examples tonight showing the success of it, right? The silver alert, you never know what that outcome's gonna be. And thank God we didn't find out what it would have been if we didn't have a camera, right? The assault. I I think more that we can capture, here's what the benefit of this is, helps the five of us up here. You know, ensure funding and and make decisions that'll support it more.
Yeah, then it. Do you wanna talk about the?
Yeah, last. Uh so this program just started this year. Intensive comprehensive, a really long report. Essentially what it is, uh they took some of the surplus funds and trying to help all. Law enforcement recruit. This particular program is new. It does mirror a different program, but it was a match for cities uh to be a part of. This is completely funded um by the state. If we apply for the grant, which we do by the end of January, hasn't actually opened up yet. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant to hire a non-traditional law enforcement candidate. Uh and send them through a training program, pay them while they're in. Uh they have to possess a college degree to take part in it. And uh essentially, so state law in Minnesota, you need a minimum of a degree and then the skills portion. So this is geared towards people who don't have a law enforcement degree, might have degrees or whatever. We hire them, we either have to create a new job quota, some kind of cadet, uh whatever it might be. We hire them, what would likely give you reduced pay rate from a licensed police officer, but a a livable wage nonetheless. Hire them on and then with this turnaround, they would start their academy in their cool heart in October of this, twenty twenty four. And finish in April of twenty twenty five. So and the state was smart when they tried to do this, knowing that we would have to budget that we have to. We would have to have an additional, at least one additional officer in twenty twenty five. Uh cause they're our responsibility when they exit college or pass the post test. During that time period, that fifty thousand will be used to pay for their tuition. They haven't nailed down a number yet, somewhere between north of ten thousand. And south of twenty thousand is their thought. They're hoping closer to the ten thousand and leaving us thirty five and forty thousand dollars to pay for wages and benefits. While they attend that, which is either gonna be, they have no choice between North Pennupin or Alex Tech. Uh so we could make it a forty hour week, pay them for their time in school. And so they're trying to gear, people aren't making that leap in their eyes to go to law enforcement, cause how do you go back to school for a year? And not have a wage to support a family. So in theory, it sounds really good. I still have some concerns. We look at the State Patrol and the Gay Wardens both host non-traditional academies. Uh and having some intimate knowledge with both, they have sometimes have fifty percent more coverage. Uh for us in Sartell, we haven't had like a huge hiring crisis like a lot of the state has. We're able to find some candidates, but the candidate pool is still pretty shallow. So I did confirm with the state that the hiring process is ours to own. There's no, they don't regulate it. We can pick who we want and how we want. So internally, uh me and I have been working on, I think we would, if we're able to apply and get it, and you guys would be willing to try the grant. We would focus on on military veterans alone. And the reason for that is to support our veterans. I think he's a. Seen that's important to me, but it is a city, I think that's important. Uh and we also recognize that. They have so much unlike, not the dog and accountant, but an accountant, sorry, uh who might wanna become a police officer, might not totally.
You know you want to. You know you want to.
But they, you know, the the leap it takes to think about defensive tactics and firearms trainings and things that we do. Are ingrained in the military already, so there's a, the piece that scares other candidates away or like kinda get into it, and this isn't for me. A lot of our military veterans have that built into them already, so Camp Berkeley is close by, we have a lot of. Uh, veterans who leave at forty when they get their full retirement, but are still, are looking for something to do after retirement, uh, for ten to fifteen years and. That was our thought and just kinda wanna run that by you guys before we put in for the grant and get your thoughts on that.
So our financial, city financial contribution is between thirty five and forty, you're expecting?
Uh, no, that that would be all, all state funded, we wouldn't have to fund anything until they end college, April twenty twenty five, then we have to take them on.
Okay.
We have the position budgeted.
We'd, yeah, do that a year from now?
Yeah.
Do we, and and you said we own the process, um, can we put stipulation in there and we might not have the answer today, but. Uh, stipulate that they need to stay a Sartell employee for X amount, right? What I wouldn't wanna do is fund someone to get him to a, be a cop for them to go to a neighboring community.
Chief, the, a couple of chiefs in this meeting had that exact question and she had a good point, she's like, well, that's why you're not. We're, we're on no financial obligation to this person, we are out time and effort, so there is, state law is pretty restrictive, we can. Put like, if you're going to make it through this process and get through training and leave us within a year, you have to reimburse us for certain. Equipment and di- like, there are different things in there that we could try to ask for, but quite literally, we are out only my efforts, I guess, in trying to recruit this person. Because every ounce of time, I mean, they were not even in the PD, they're just at this college for six months.
Sure.
And liability wise, if the person drops out midway through the course, state needs to grant, uh, if they make it to the very end, don't pass the post test. States eat that fifty thousand dollars, we're not up dying, so there's kind of a really low risk to us too. I, I was not interested in the match one for all the reasons you're thinking of, the match one, we would be out our funds.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a great, great story and a great opportunity to give somebody.
That's, I'll be honest, it's really why we're looking at it, we don't necessarily absolutely need this, but it's looking in places we haven't. Uh, it gives somebody a chance to change your life and maybe try to do something they've always wanted.
Well, and I think is, you know, you're, you'd be looking for applicants this coming summer and I, I think. Based on where the economy's going and where the labor force is going, there's people that are going to be looking for work. Uh, having to reinvent themselves in the workforce at that time, where the last three years, they could. Find any job they wanted, so timing wise feels really good to get someone that, um, might need to find a spot too.
We can go, we did discuss going as far as limited to, to see like if what the candidate pool looked like or if it wasn't. Uh, we can say Sartell residents only for this cadet partnership, as well, just if we're really trying to focus on giving one of our citizens. Uh, like a leg up to make a change in their career, I don't know if that's too limited, you know, if it's gonna, especially with Camp Berkeley being there and some of the veterans that live up to that. Uh, we, if you guys were wanting to try that, we would certainly do that.
I like that idea.
I, I guess I'd leave it up to you if you think, you know, obviously the, the grid process, if it'd be too restrictive. Is that something that you have to clarify in our application or at what point would we have to?
Yeah, you'd almost have to like provide your home address on the application to verify that you're, I'm not gonna drive out to your house, you know, kinda take that face value that that's your residence. Uh, the thought was if we did do that, we would just wanna be open to, let's open it up for two weeks or whatever the application. See what you get, and if it's really like, if we only got two, maybe we open it up beyond that, but. It's, if we're thinking about the city, thinking about the citizens, are the people we serve here, we could.
I love the idea of a non-traditional resident that could become, um, I like the, your lead in on, hey, we want this to be veteran driven. Might be restrictive of having to be a Sartell resident and a veteran looking to change career, um, and so. You know, probably two ways about that, one is Sartell resident with veteran preference. Or you might just have to go veteran with Sartell preference, right? One of the two, but, um, yeah, I think there's an awesome story to be told through all of this, much like some of the other initiatives you're working on, so.
Uh, with that, it sounds like some, I'll put it for the grant and I think once, if we know we get accepted to it, we'll probably bring it back for vote just to accept the fund.
Round tables.
Jill.
Nothing. You don't have anything at nine thirty?
Alright, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.